Thank you. We are now back in open session. Mr. Manager, public address to the board. Do you have people that have signed for that?
Yes, sir. We have several names. We have, first name is Richard Rizzuti. If he'll come to the podium, please.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Richard Rizzuti. I reside at 623 Jordan Drive, Greenville, North Carolina. I want to thank you all once again for reconsidering the lease agreement. Again, I'm not a confrontational person. This is difficult for me to come before you once again, but in my opinion, a real injustice has occurred here. As you know, we were the most recent owners of the property in question, the Parkers landing a leased property. In contrast to the Parker family, we were forced to evacuate during the flood, and although we were not forced to sell to the federal government at a greatly reduced amount, it was the best option for us at the time. We've been waiting now ten years for this lease option to be available while the county decided about using the property for a park. We were only notified by the county because the Parkers, who were non-adjacent property owners, expressed interest in the lease, but according to your rules, adjacent property owners have first priority. How the Parker family found out about the lease prior to the adjacent property owners is unclear. I suspect Mr. James notified them. He would have had firsthand knowledge. I immediately filed a complete application, whereas the Parkers filed an incomplete application eight to nine days later. Right then and there, we had met two of your top stipulations to receive the lease according to your rules. We were adjacent property owners, and we had our first, we had the first application. We should have been granted the lease, just like the other eighty-nine recipients of these properties. This issue should have never come to this board. But Mr. James prevented that from happening. It became obvious that he wanted the Parkers to have this lease. According to your rules, an appeal meeting was held, and I went to that meeting. Mr. Elliott, Mr. Rhodes, and Mr. James were present, but neither Mr. Parker nor any member of his family were present. We waited thirty minutes while Mr. James made cellphone calls trying to get them to come. No one showed. Once again, we should have definitely been given that lease, but Mr. James prevented Mr. Elliott and the county from doing that. He stated that he wanted it to come before this board. Now, prior to that board meeting, I didn't call each of you. I was advised to take the time and write a letter describing our position for you to review at your agenda meeting the week before. I have a copy of that letter dated July 4, 2011, and I hand-delivered it to the county manager's office on the Tuesday before your Thursday agenda meeting. It's my understanding you didn't receive that letter. I have literally done everything in my power to obtain this lease. I have met all of your first priority rules, but unfortunately, I do not have a Commissioner James fighting for me. This has been an uphill battle. Finally, and also of crucial importance to take note, by granting this lease to the Parker family, you are leasing property with no ready access for them. The easement drawn out on paper necessitates plowing some sort of driveway that ranges from an eighth to a quarter mile through dense woodland and destroying that protected area. We, however, have a quarter-mile driveway already paved on our property that continues onto the leased property right up to where our house used to stand. I urge you to consider these issues, review your lease buyout property rules, reconsider your vote.
Thanks, sir. Who's next?
Next, we have Meredith Rizzuti.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wife of Dr. Rizzuti. I wanted to take time today because I didn't last time, and I think the history of the land is forgotten sometimes. You heard from the Parkers that they used to live there, and they have history there as well. But I wanted to remind the commissioners that our family were the last ones that were there. And it was a powerful day to leave that house, and you'll hear from the Glennons. But they built that house, and Rich bought it for his late wife, and we raised two children there. And they still go and visit that property, and we cut daffodils every spring. And knowing that I had to pick up the phone and call them after the last July meeting and say, "Sorry, guys. They've given the lease to people that haven't lived there in, I don't know, fifty, a hundred years, and you can't go anymore," was a really hard thing to do. So I wanted you guys to consider that and hear that out. Those kids lost their mom there. That was our first place that we lived after we got married. We left in a boat, yet you are very quickly giving that land for somebody else to use happily. And I just think that those rules were put in place for a purpose and a reason, and the people that walked away from their homes, never to return, have that priority for a reason. And you need to consider that and think about that. And I sit with these kids here and think, they're going to see justice. And the last time we were here, we did not see justice. So I ask you to reconsider and think about that when you go home to your home tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right.
Okay. Next, we have Alice Glennon.
Good morning. Thank you for the attention you're giving us today. We did live there before the Rizzuti's, and I, my husband and I built the house that was destroyed by Floyd, and also designed the road, and I personally planted just about every tree that is out there now. I mean, I know where every live oak is that I put in the ground. I know it's got a name. A lot of, we spent a lot of love, a lot of time taking care of that land. And we own the property on either side of the land in question now, because the Parkers are trying to get this lease owned. And we were not consulted in any way regarding this. I would just really hate to see the trees that I did plant destroyed. I would hate that fairness was not shown to the Rizzuti's, because I do think they did everything in their power to follow the rules, regulations, and everything designed by our county to protect people like this and their rights. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Next, we have Tom Glennon.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. Very quickly, I just wanted to make it clear that I assembled that property almost twenty-five years ago, and in no instance did I buy any of it from the Parker family. I bought it from, from people who, and it was a derelict property at the time we bought it. As Alice told you, she planted the trees, and we pushed the dirt around and made the berms, built the house that the Rizzuti's talked about, and, and it was, it was ours. We still own property adjacent to on, on three sides of this contested property. We plan to build there, and, as they do. And, it's, it's just, I think some things have happened that you didn't have the facts on, and I think that this needs to be reconsidered. I have paid taxes continuously on that, and an additional hundred and twenty-five acres that, that is still in the control of the Rizzuti's, Alice and I, and my children. So I just want you to consider that. That's, we would have put in the application for the lease. Alice and I didn't do that out of deference to the respect for the Rizzuti's, because we felt that it was, that it was their right to have it. So I think it's just all been a misunderstanding, and I apologize for that to the Rizzuti's, that I haven't been here sooner. I've known Mr. James since I first bought the property. He was one of the first people that I went to see. We always had a good relationship. And I think that I would ask both Mr. James and the rest of you to think about it, reconsider it, and that justice be done. I appreciate it, and thanks to all of you for being here.
Thanks, sir. All right. And I believe this is on the, somewhere else on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, for items for decision later on, first item.
All right. You want, is it desire of the board to move that up now, or?
Yes, sir.
I think it would be good.
All right. Let's go forward, then.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. I understood from what Mr. Glennon said that the Rizzuti's plan to build on the property. I think you said that, that you all were planning to build eventually. And are you all planning to build or sell? Could you come to the mic, please?
We were just out at the property yesterday. It needs some cleanup, obviously, after the hurricane, but we, we can't build on the leased property. But our adjacent property, since we own it, we do have the ability to build on it. And our hope and dream is actually to build some sort of cabin complex for ministry refuge. I've not mentioned that to the board before, because I, I don't know definitely that we'll do that, but we, we really do have that as a hope. We, we hope to use it as ministry prayer refuge. There's a prayer refuge in, in Green County, outside of Snow Hill, that we go to, our church uses. We'd love to have something closer, and that's been something on the radar. So, something out there. It's not something new that we've come up with. I've actually talked to Billy Parker about it during the negotiations prior to coming before this board. So that's our thought right now.
Okay. So if you do build something, having the lease on the front property, even if you don't have the lease, if the county retained it, you could still use that, because that would be part of the, the leased property that's in front of your property that you own?
Yes. If the county retained it and used it as a park, we would certainly be able to allow those who are coming out to our property on some type of ministry prayer refuge access that, but...
Because no building can go on the leased property at all, and I think everybody understands that. I just want to say that so the citizens know. And that being leased property, adjoining your property, if the county retained it, it would be as it is, and anyone could use it, because that was kind of the intent when we were talking about it before.
Correct. But, but our concern is if another family is using it, and they're having family get-togethers or other, then it would be a little bit more difficult to use it as a ministry or prayer refuge.
Yes. Understand. Thank you very much.
Mr. Manager, don't you have some other information that follows with this?
Yes, sir. After the printing of the agenda, which we printed last Thursday and distributed, we did receive a letter from Billy Parker, and it was addressed to the chairman and to the Board of County Commissioners. Basically, in this letter, he is asking that the lease agreement that was approved on July the 11th is asking that, says it is my desire for this to be, basically, he wants to terminate the lease agreement. There is a ninety-day clause in there that allows either him or the county to terminate the lease with ninety days' notice. He is asking to have that ninety-day notice period waived, and he would like the termination to be immediate if the board would agree to that. This is dated September 27. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I say move that, we accept that agreement with the Parker family.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to put an amendment to the original motion that has been presented, if I may.
You make substitute motions, is that what you want?
Well, it would be the same as hers, but I add more to it.
Make, make your motion. We'll, we'll call it a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I move to accept Billy Parker's request to return the Parker's Landing lease and to hold the land for future recreational purposes or whatever needs to be done, and not to lease it to any individual person.
Second. And discussion on that, Mr. Williams.
I've given this law thought over the weekend, and I don't understand the purpose of now holding the property when we were going to lease the property. We were ready to move on it, and now we're not. I, I don't understand that. And, and I know some of Mr. James' issue with use of the property for the community north of the river, but that's not part of our policy. Our policy is that the adjacent property owners will get the first option on it, and I think we should stick with our policy. And I think that if we're not going to stick with the policy, we, we really need to schedule some in the next meeting to readdress the whole rule. But it just seems we were ready to move on it. We had decided on it. Mr. Parker has withdrawn his application, and so now I don't understand why we're going to sit on it when we were ready to lease. And the current applicant does fall within the parameters of what we've asked. And that's, that's what I looked at. Each family has history. Anyone that's ever lived there has history there. But when we boil it all the way down to the county's policy, we have a basic policy on what we're going to do with the property. And it almost seems, and I know it's not, but it seems punitive to now sit on it when we were ready to move, and now we're, now we just want to hold. That's all I've got. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Melvin, and then Eugene.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it was commendable for Billy Parker to come and try to, and terminate this agreement. I think he's seen something in that, that apparently that he, he wanted to justify by termination. And, and having said that, I thank his honor right now, and I agree with Mr. James, that we, we just retain that property back with the county. Now, it's not, it's not saying that this property will permanently be retained for, in forever. It may be another reconsideration that we might, might be able to do this, but I think as of now, that is a proper way to do it, and I certainly support Mr. James' motion.
You say something, Mr. James?
The only thing I want to say, and the speakers up here said this, there's a great deal of history in Parker's Landing. Farmers used to come up there. They had to put the farmers would get fertilized. But the main thing that I'm concerned and so forth, that pathway that went from Highway 33 went straight to Parker's Landing. For hundreds of years, people from all around would drive down there. It was a fishing off point. People would go down there fishing and things such as that. But there's no need in me saying that. There is a great deal of history there, and I know that. And this is the very thing that the young lady says, that it's, her people or anybody, now, if we keep it, it will be open for anybody to go there. And somebody needs to be really in charge of it, and the county is in a position to be in charge of it and make sure that it is protected, and whoever wanted to use it could take and use it. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just a minute, just a minute. Is James here? James Rhodes?
Yes, sir.
Will you come up, please, James? Has Dr. Rizzuti followed the rules set forth by your planning board for leasing this property?
Yes, sir.
He now has a petition or request in for it, and he's done what he's supposed to do with that?
Yes, sir.
Is I, do I understand it correctly, when the rules and regulations said that we were to give the prior owner and adjoining owners first priority?
Correct.
All right. Anybody else want to ask James another question?
I want to just say one thing, and, before we vote. Today is the first time that I can recall, I don't, I have not been back and looked at the minutes, that we have heard the, what we heard when we made the decision, or what I heard personally, when we made the decision in giving it to the Parkers, was that we had done something wrong. We had broken the law. We had broken a rule. And, and that's all I heard in emails and letters and responses. Today, I heard an appeal that I felt like came more from the heart, and heard some other things. And I, I think you can understand some of the feeling when, I mean, we really, we checked with the attorney. We did not break the law or break a rule. When you, you know, you put forth a process that you're going to use, and that process, if, we don't have to do it, because it's not like a law, so it hasn't been broken. And I'm always, I was raised to, to follow rules and guidelines, and being an educator, that's what I've done most of my life. But it's not the first time in many situations where a decision has been made that didn't go with the rule, but it wasn't like breaking it or breaking the law. And I think if the approach had been a little different in the beginning, and not so much admonishing the people who were making the decision based on, you know, the, what they did and what the feelings were about why it was done. One commissioner's name comes up all the time in relationship to this, but there are nine of us, and I was not spoken to about it at all, but by one person until after it was all over. And in the presentation, the last time when the vote was taken, I didn't hear what I heard today from the Rizzuti's and the Glennons. So I just wanted to make sure that that was said, that it was, it's kind of a different atmosphere. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Just a minute. Dr. Rizzuti, do you want to reply to something that was said from up here? Just come back up here, please.
I understand the substitute motion that's on the table regarding the county keeping that property, but there is a significant problem with that as far as public access. Right now, that is an isolated piece of property where the only access to it is through our property. There is an easement, but as I said, that easement would have to be carved out. The public cannot get to it. So if you keep it as a county property, it can't, it can't reliably be used unless you're planning on building some driveway that's a quarter-mile long through wooded area that's been drawn out as the easement. And in reference to Ms. Ward, we appreciate all the work you're doing. I have no, I don't have anything against anybody here, nothing personal. It was just a series of events that we got wrapped up into, and I'm sorry this has occurred.
And I still...
Melvin, and then Jamie, and then Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask our county attorney, Ms. Gallo, what is your recommendation, base of argument, if I may?
I can tell you from a legal perspective that you're, you're all familiar with the, what your policy requires. It's in my position that the two motions, well, the two motions that are on the floor are both lawful actions. In other words, as I understand, the motion that was made, and second, your original motion, is to accept the requested termination effective immediately, and that is a lawful option for you to follow, if that's what you choose to do, and to do only that. And that would result in the county retaining ownership of the property, and that is lawful. That would essentially return you to the position you were in prior for the last ten years. The substitute motion that's on the, on the floor is also a lawful motion. It takes the original motion a little bit further and, and eliminates the ability without further board action to lease the property elsewhere, because that motion involves two steps. One, it accepts the termination, and second, it leaves the property at this time in the county's ownership and control. It is also a lawful option, if the board so chooses, to accept the termination from Mr. Parker and to lease it to the Rizzuti's as another lawful option on the table. So it's not my role to tell you what to do, but to stop you if I observe that something is unlawful. You have a policy in place that may guide you, and you have the ability, through a majority action of the board, to vary from a policy if you believe the facts support that. And so I hope that answers your question.
Jamie, did you want to say something? All right, Jamie, and then Glenn, then Ethan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to say that I thank Mr. Parker for his willingness to do the gentlemanly thing here and ask for his lease to be terminated. And of course, I support that because that is his request. I would also like to say that I appreciate Dr. Rizzuti for, for his, for his desire to have a place of meditation there. I had not heard that before, but I think that is a great idea. In addition to having it available for those kinds of activities, if someone wanted to use it like a scouting group or a boys and girls club wanted to use it for recreational or for educational purposes, I'm assuming that you would allow that also if you were given this lease?
Certainly.
Okay. So then it would be kind of open for the community use, and you would, would have the, the responsibility of it. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Glenn, and then Ethan.
I just want to address just a couple of things. The one about Mr. Parker, no doubt, is a class act, and his family's very important to Pitt County. The, if, no matter what side you're on the issue of, you can't deny that. And as far as Mr. James' motivation, I will tell you that from personally knowing him, his motivation is one thing and one thing only to people. And I know that from knowing him personally, and he will fight tooth and nail for what he believes is right for the people. But when it comes to the history of the area, everything has a history. The land my house sits on used to be somebody's farm at one time, and people make real estate decisions over time. We have a policy, I think it's our job as government to boil everything down to the least common denominator, which is, we have a policy, we have an applicant, we have a previous leasing who's withdrawn his application. I think it's proper that we accept it, because he's done the gentlemanly thing, as Commissioner Garrison said, and that we move forward and follow our policy and continue with the lease. And just to make things hard on the clerk and the attorney, I'll make a substitute motion that we accept Mr. Parker's lease withdrawal, termination, and that we stick to our policy and grant the lease as asked to the Rizzuti's, who are the most recent owners and adjacent property owners, if that's proper, ma'am, ma'am.
I'm not sure that you're allowed to substitute, to substitute. Unless one of the motions on the floor were withdrawn, we don't, your rules don't allow them.
I'll take away my motion, because Mr. James included my motion in his motion, which was just to accept the Parker request.
And is the second to your motion also withdrawn?
Just a minute.
Did you say?
Mr. Harris seconded your motion, with that second also withdrawn. That then procedurally would convert Mr. James' motion that's seconded by Melvin to the only motion on the floor.
So the substitute motion would be in order then, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Now, we want to get back here. We've got it.
There's a second to it.
Do we have a second to the substitute motion?
I'll second it.
All right. Now, with Ethan, then Dave.
When FEMA bought this property out, did you have the option to reject their offer?
Yes, we did. As I stated, do I need to go up there and speak?
Please.
As I stated, we, we were forced out during the flood because our house was filling with, with water. But when FEMA offered, we did have the option to not accept their offer. But when we looked at the, the difference between trying to rebuild the house versus what FEMA had to offer, it was certainly the better option to go with what FEMA, FEMA had to offer, even, even though it was an offer that amounted to about half the value of the home.
In fact, you took the FEMA offer, and now you're asking us to rent it to you for a dollar for ten years. Is that correct?
It's, it's, it's available, just like the Parkers are asking to rent it for a dollar a year. I mean, if the county's going to offer it, we definitely have an interest in it, just like anyone would have an interest in it, but we're trying to abide by your priority rules.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Dave?
Trying to find out what you folks want done with this property. What you want done, Doc?
Again...
That'll satisfy y'all. That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yes. We, we own twenty acres that's adjacent to the property, and this twenty acres includes a driveway that we, we used prior to the flood to access our house, which was on the property in question. The leased property obviously cannot be built on according to county rules. Now, we do have the option to build on our twenty acres. And as, as I was explaining before, and I can't give you a guarantee, because I don't know if I have the funding, I don't know if I'll be led to do this, but we do have hopes of developing some type of ministry center or a prayer refuge out there, just like they have in Green County outside of Snow Hill.
Thank you, Doc. We have a motion and a substitute motion. Procedurally wise, we vote on substitute motion first. Now, everybody understand where we are?
I want to repeat it, if you will, please.
All right.
And, and I just note on your system that some have already entered, and I'm not sure that, what they were entering it toward.
Well, clear this. Clear this, please.
The only way to clear this is for you all to press a button.
All right. Press a button, and let's clear.
Yeah.
Any button, I believe, they said.
Any button you want to press and confirm it.
All right. Now, we're cleared, cleared.
Yeah, Mr. James and Dr. Johnson.
Mr. James, if you can push one more time?
Tom, that's right.
Is that right?
Technology rises to the water.
Thank you.
All right, now that's clear.
That's now clear.
Now we've had them, we, we want to repeat the motion first, then the substitute motion.
Okay. The first motion is to accept the lease termination agreement from Billy Parker and for the county to hold the property for future use.
That's Mr. James' motion. Who seconded that?
McLaughlin.
Melvin? All right. Okay, now next substitute motion by Mr. Williams.
Seconded by Commissioner Garrison is to accept the termination of the lease agreement, agreement from Billy Parker and to lease the property to the Rizzuti family.
All right, now we're going to vote on substitute motion first. Ready to vote?
That's your motion, Mr. Williams.
Yeah.
All right.
We got it.
Substitute motion passed. Original motion dies. All right, let's move on. Thank you, Doc.
Now, what one did we vote on? I mean, what?
You just voted on the substitute motion, which has the effect of accepting the termination and leasing it to the Rizzuti's.
I don't want to vote that way.
Okay.
All right, now that's his vote.
My fault. That's changed my vote.
So you, um-
I wanted to counter to became the ownership.
Pass seven to two with Mr. Smith and Mr. James.
I, I think that there was a misunderstanding of that, too, when you said substitute motion.
That's right. It should have been what you said.
Do you want to change yours, too, Melvin?
It was the original motion.
All right, so the vote, Madam Clerk and Attorney, is seven to two, correct? You got it? Everybody in agreement with that?
Three. Ethan said no, Melvin said no.
But you should state that the original motion is what we voted on, not the substitute motion.
No, no.
Your rules procedure require you to vote on the substitute motion first, then if it passes, then-
All right. But anyway, I wanted to-
Okay. Everybody got where we are now? Okay, we're clear for that issue. Have a good day. Now, what's next, Mr. Manager?
Next, you have Adam's report, and you have my report, manager's report. First item is your next meeting date, it's October 17th, which will be your next regular meeting on Monday, the 17th, at 6:00 p.m., then November 7th at 9:00 a.m. Item B, Hurricane Irene status report update. Not a whole lot to report here, other than we have been meeting with FEMA, working with them to make sure we have our correct documentation to pull down the public assistance dollars for overtime, for debris removal, and all the activities that are associated with Hurricane Irene. Transfer station has been open, extended hours for the last two, three-plus weeks. This past weekend, yesterday was the first day that we didn't open on Sunday, had communicated with the city of Greenville, and didn't have enough trucks to justify us having it open, but we are back to, pretty much back to the, the normal hours that we've had at the transfer station. Convenience sites are still open for the public to utilize those to bring their debris there as well. East Carolina Village of Yesteryear is asking the, inviting the board for a tour, and we have nailed down that date and time. They're inviting the Board of Commissioners out on Tuesday, October 11th, at 4:00 p.m. to, to tour the village and basically take a walking tour of what they've done since the county gave them the land, and they've relocated out there. We'll have the clerk will remind you of that tour, if, assuming you're available to attend. Item D, just a reminder about the Pitt County Fair. That does begin today, October 3rd, and runs through Saturday, the 8th, and there is a flagpole ceremony tonight, kind of an opening ceremony at the flagpole, I guess is what it formally is called, and the board has been invited to that, and I believe that there's an activity after, after that.
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m. And then item E is really not new information, but it has not been formally recognized in a board meeting. The Winter Fire District, representing the Winterboro Community Rural Fire Association, and the, the board's decision about a year ago to allow them to be spun off as a new nonprofit, serving the Winter Fire District for fire service, did receive its new ISO rating, and is back to the, the rating that they enjoyed when the, the town and the, the rules were combined as one unit. I will say that the, the new rating actually, because they're now using what they call the hydrant method to rate rather than, they're using the haul method rather than the hydrant, that 25% of the more of the people who are within five miles of the fire station are now benefiting from the lower rating and should see a, a decrease on their homeowner's insurance. Didn't want to note as well that nobody should see their homeowner's rates go down to what they were, because technically, all across Pitt County, all homeowners went up by, insurance went up by some factor due to a rating increase, but there should be some decrease associated with moving from the nine back down to the six for those who are within the five-mile district in this fire insurance district. That's confusing, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Go.
I'd like to make a statement about that. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Winter Rural Fire District for doing an outstanding job in getting their rating back down to a six. That is a task that they worked hard to accomplish, and I appreciate the efforts of every one of them getting those rates back down. It has been a major challenge for us and for the citizens that live in that community over the last years, getting these increased insurance premiums, but hopefully, we will now see those go down, and they will go back to the six. And as our manager pointed out, there's about 600 homes in that Winter Rural District that will now enjoy a six rating, that have never enjoyed a six rating before. And again, I'd just like to express my appreciation to the Winter Fire District and all others in the county who worked to make that go back to a six.
Beth, I believe you want to respond?
Just that I, I want to thank the board for agreeing to let, send a letter to the group that was reviewing the information that was gathered, and that was a tedious process, for sending that letter to the powers that be. It had to go through a rigorous process in Raleigh. I don't know where else it had to go.
New Jersey.
New Jersey and all over, and it came down, what, two weeks ago, and usually, they were projecting January. So thank you, commissioners, for supporting that.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
I'd like to know just what did it do? What percentage did it drop? I've never, I've got a lot of stuff insured.
It depends upon, depends upon who you're insured with, what you're insuring. The, the rate increase for those, those people that had rate increases is somewhere around 25, 30, 35% rate increase going from the six to the nine. Now, again, now that it's changed, effective December 1st, any policy that renews December 1st or thereafter should see a decrease. It probably won't come back down that same factor, because like I said, all insurance across all property in Pitt County increased because of the Department of Insurance and the, the insurance commissioner rate increases that were going on. I think on average, probably all property, as I understand, all property insurance probably increased somewhere around 10% all across North Carolina due to what was going on in Raleigh. So folks, like I was trying to say originally, folks are not going to see their, their property insurance as their policies renew come back all the way down to the point where it was, but they should see and enjoy some decrease.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There, there is a table on the Department of Insurance webpage under the Fire Marshal's page, and it has a comparison of insurance premiums on it for a, for like $100,000. And for $100,000, a Class 6 would be like about an average, there are three, there are three numbers here, but it would be an average of about $150,000 less than a Class 9. So it is pretty significant. So if you have a $200,000 house, you're talking about a $300 difference.
The insurance company is what determines that a great deal.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Those figures, you got that, they will vary completely.
But they are interviews from three different insurance agents.
It could vary also, depending upon your risk and the number of claims you have submitted in the past as well.
That's right. These insurance companies, they, boy, they can do just about what they want to do.
But what I'm saying is, all of the people that have expressed concern about their premiums over the last year were told by their insurance agent that it was all because of the Board of Commissioners and this, this rate change. And I, and you're right, there are other factors involved, and those that have called me with concerns, I've asked them to go back to their insurance agent and have them to break down the, the total delta, and there was more in it than just the rate change.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, ready to go?
Yes, sir. Item number two, under item's report, performance measurement evaluation, there are three things that are mentioned in this agenda abstract. As you're aware, we've been reporting to you on performance measurement for a good number of years now, and the document that is in your packet, it looks like it's the blue-bound document, is the document that we have reported to you annually, I think even semi-annually, in terms of our different performance indicators. All the work that we've done in the past year is trying to make this document more usable for the board, for staff, and for the public. Because, I mean, this is a good document, but we've got some, some work to do to make it more user-friendly, and the two projects that Melanie's going to talk about in association with this are all groundwork to make this, again, more user-friendly. So Melanie, I'm going to turn this to you.
About 18 months ago, the county received something called a Trailblazer Grant, which enables you to work and take this document and create something that you can use publicly, that the public can better understand, and, and like Scott said, it provides a snapshot. We engaged East Carolina University's Center for Survey Research and Mandy Lancaster to help us do a survey with the community, and then we turned the survey results into focus groups to try and better understand what the community would like to see and what they already knew about what the county did. So also in your packet, you should have the survey results and the focus group results. What we were doing was gauging if they knew how we shared our information, if they knew about our website, if they knew about the TV channel, if they knew about the ad in the Sunday, or in the Saturday paper. Did they ever notice on the back of their tax bill all of the, the county information? And what, what was it, you know, that would, that would help them? The results of this survey now became what you should have here, which is the Performance Scorecard, which, the very first edition, which is, is this tobacco-colored one that you have here, talks about how we took a year to survey the community. We are going to move to the more visuals in revenues and expenditures, and we're going to use this stoplight to talk about some of the goals the department's had and how successful they were at achieving them. And you'll start seeing these when we go out and speak to Rotary's, civic groups, you know, Kiwanis, scout groups, even, even some of the high school history classes or local government classes. This is what we'll take with us, which will give them a quick snapshot, along with something like our budget in brief. Mandy Lancaster with the university was supposed to be here with us today, and she called this morning, and has, has had something come up and is not going to be here. We can schedule her back if you'd like. What we heard from the citizens, though, was the more we educate, the better they understand the actions that you have to take. And I, I think that was the resounding, the more you educate us, the better off we are, the better we are able to support the actions that you take, whether that's cutting a department's services, or asking for a tax increase, or understanding what revaluation means. So it's been a good year. I think this document is, is very easy to understand, and this is one of the handouts because, as the manager mentioned, with the fair starting this week, the county has a booth at the fair that will be manned every night by department heads, and we'll actually be passing out the scorecard as part of our presentation this week.
Do we have a motion to approve that submitted?
I move.
In discussion. Let's vote. Thank you, Melvin.
Let's have a motion to approve the consent, Lieutenant.
Second.
All right, in discussion. Let's vote.
And if you're finished voting on, okay, that's your first. Now you're cleared to vote your second.
All right, now, page 114, number two.
This is the first response program of Noel Lee and, actually, Alan Everett. I believe Alan's going to make the presentation this morning.
I'm here to present the fire response program and ask for your consideration of approval. A desire for such a program was expressed by several county fire departments. As a result of that, a committee was formed to develop guidelines for such a fire response program. And in forming a committee, basically, the committee was comprised of the county fire and EMS associations, as well as the county medical director's office, as well as county staff. A document was created, and as a result, the program has been approved by the county fire and EMS associations, along with the EMS Oversight Committee, as well as the medical director. The program, in, in summary, is really designed to allow participating fire departments to be dispatched to cardiac-related calls within their fire response district as determined by our emergency medical dispatch protocols, ultimately aiding the EMS response to an individual in need. Fire department personnel will be trained in CPR and the use of AED's automated external defibrillators. This is a voluntary program for fire departments that would like to participate, and participation is not mandated by all of the departments. This program, if it is approved by the board this morning, would replace a similar program that was adopted back in 1986. Now, the '86 document was reviewed during the committee's work to create this policy, and the committee found that this policy was in a sense outdated, that being the 1986 edition. So this morning, I would ask that you adopt the fire response program that you have before you and repeal the 1986 document.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I appreciate the fire departments for being willing to participate in this program. It is a voluntary program, so I don't know how many will volunteer to participate, but it is a good program because it improve, it improves and increases our EMS coverage throughout the county, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
I second it.
In discussion, if not, let's vote. Thanks, sir. All right, John, or?
Dave.
You got it?
You got it.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm here to, to ask for approval to purchase a new compactor and install a new compactor at the transfer station. We opened bids on September 22nd for a new waste transfer loading system compactor. In your documents, you get, you do have the bid tabulations, and I will go through that. Finance, financing for this, excuse me, finance has been working on the financing of this through the LGC. This will be a loan, that big loan that y'all knew about. My part will be paid out of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. I have budgeted that money this year in the budget plus interest, so that is in the, in the budget for this year. Currently, we have a transfer, a compactor at the transfer station now. It's been in existence for about 16 years. The life expectancy of this machine's about 10 years, so we've gotten six years more life out of it than we expected. By the time we put the machine in, it'll probably be, if, if approved today, it'll probably be about six, about, about between three and six months before the new machine's built and installed and everything. The use of the compactor does save us some money, saves us manpower. We don't have to have anybody tarp the loads, we don't have to have anybody pack down the loads. Trash pickup around the facility is less because the compactor just compactes it into the back of the truck, and then the truck pulls away, you shut the doors, and it's, and it's in there, and then goes off to the landfill. We, we bid the, we allowed the bid documents, the bidders to prepare two different pricing, one to provide a trade-in value for our existing compactor and one without the trade-in. After reviewing the documents, we would, our recommendation, there's three companies that bid on it. Harris Equipment, which is the company that we, our existing compackers from, SSI, which is another company, and then J-Mac, which is, is a third company that we receive bids. On the second page, you can see the, the totals without the trade-in vary from 1.6 million to 778. The difference is, the machine's a little different. The, the cheap, or the less expensive machine is a newer design. It's, it compacts a little different, and it is our recommendation that we ask that you approve this one. Phil, John, and myself went to go see two different machines of this, of this type- Phil, John, and myself went to go see two different machines of this type in two different applications, and we feel very comfortable that this will do what we want it to do. I like it, and it's got less moving parts, it shouldn't break down. And we can also install this one and then take our compact, our existing compactor, spend a little bit of money on it, and now we'll have two units. One goes down, one needs service, and we can always go back to the other one. I'll be glad to answer any questions. What I would like approval today is that we award the contract for 778 to 9429 to JMAC to install, purchase and install a new trash compactor.
John, are you saying that three bids were not on the same machine?
Well, they're different.
Go ahead.
The bid documents were, they're different manufacturers. This machine, our current machine has a real large, it makes one big loaf, it pushes it in the truck.
Phil knows where I'm getting to, maybe he wants to answer, but you might as well do away with the bid process if you're bidding on different items. That's my point.
Are you bidding on specs?
Yes.
Even on specs, Glenn, that's different spec, but go ahead. Go ahead.
We did have specifications, and these things are built in a factory the same way over and over again, so different people build them different ways. The machine that John has recommended would cost less to build, and it is a lesser price to us, but it was allowed in our specifications.
It must be, you know, when you're getting almost for a third, what the other two parties were bidding, and that's what was, of course, I think that's good business, if it accomplishes what you want to do with it.
Yeah, we do believe that this is the most efficient way for us to go along.
Now, did somebody else have a question? Maybe I'm the only one.
I was going to say that I was very, very pleased with the testimony of both of these saying that this $778,000 piece of equipment will meet our needs and do everything we need, because I think we had forecasted about $1.5 million for this project. So anytime we can get a cheaper piece of, or a less expensive piece of equipment to do the same job, then I'm surely in favor of that. I think we've already talked about this as a board, and we've included it in our capital expenditure, so I'd like to make a motion we approve it.
I second it.
All right, read the vote. Any other questions?
I have a question.
All right, Eva.
I've had some concern about people in Aiden, that the town takes the garbage and takes out to the landfill, the station outside of Aiden, and dump it in, and then there's not room for the people that's out in the community to get there.
Yes, they do. Monday, Monday and Tuesday, they bring a load from the town, their truck, and dump into it. What the public is upset about is it takes them about 15 to 20 minutes to unload it, and we make them clean up any mess that they make. It's not, we're, they don't have, they don't, never have a place to put their garbage, because we're aware of it. He will dump the compactor first thing before the truck gets there, so the compactor is empty, and we dump it again on Tuesday.
Does the city of Greenville do this practice? Why does the town of Aiden take the garbage to this station?
I know this is...
How do you justify it?
I was told we justify it because everybody pays the $71, and all residential waste comes to our facility free of charge, but this practice was done prior to me getting here, and I don't know how it started.
It's our preference that the municipalities would take it to the transfer station rather than taking it to a convenience site. However, like John was saying, all households pay the $71 per household fee per unit, so we really can't restrict a municipality from bringing it to a convenience site. I guess we could create a rule and tell them they can't, but the only other exception to this has been the town of Bethel. I believe Bethel does, once a week, they take it up to that convenience site.
The town of Bethel's private contractor dumps a half a load in the Bethel compactor on Monday mornings.
Now, we would not allow a commercial, somebody who has a commercial site to dump it in the same manner?
No. Well, Bethel has a private contractor.
That's for households versus...
But it's their residential pickup.
Is that what you want to say, Phil? Okay. Mr. James.
All right, but if a person goes up there with a large amount on it, you, at the station out there, they send them on to Greenville, or either they pay.
The only time they should be sending them to us is if it's construction and demolition brief.
So they can come out and go and pick up a load of, a big truck.
Yes, sir.
And I've told us, I thought if it was a large truck, that they had to carry it to Greenville.
I've had conversations many a time with the site attendant, make sure that they allow them to dump it. If they've got a huge 19-foot, 20-foot trailer full of garbage, yes, they can.
That's good. I wouldn't see any complaints.
All right, do we want to approve this as presented? Have I read the...
We've moved and seconded it.
Yeah, we have. We voted.
All right, I'm on my next item then.
Okay.
Thank you. Number four, Dr. Marr. You're going, oh, you've got...
You don't like Dr. Marr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, for good or ill, I'm filling in for Dr. Marr today. I'm here to ask the board to approve the proposed revised fee schedule for the Health Department. This is for our clinic fees. We're doing this a little differently based on guidance we've received from the North Carolina Department of Public Health. Really, these proposed fees are to maximize our annual cost settlement with Medicaid. You'll note in the handout that you have, some of the fees are going up pretty dramatically. That's not many, most of them are going up a few dollars, a few are actually decreasing. But this is really to maximize our annual Medicaid cost settlement number. We pulled in almost $700,000 last year from our Medicaid cost settlement. The new criteria to maximize that cost settlement, we need to have our fees set at or above our costs as determined by the Medicaid cost settlement of prior year. Typically, we would try to bring fee adjustments to the board during the normal budget process. However, we didn't get the information from Medicaid, from the state, about our calculated cost of service until mid-July, and actually didn't get the report until, I think, in August. So we were precluded from bringing this to the board during the regular budget process, and I'll be happy to attempt to answer any of your questions.
Any question? Doc Johnson?
No question. I move approval.
Second.
All right, in further discussion, not let's vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Next, you have item five, appointment to the Greenville Planning and Zoning Commission. This is on page 141. This is a follow-up to the meeting in which Brian Smith was appointed as the regular member. He used to be the alternate, and now you need an alternate on Greenville's planning and zoning commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we appoint Brian Smith, who is the alternate presently, and advertise for the alternate member seat.
You've already done that. This is actually, I was just mentioning that that's what you've done previously.
Excuse me? Is this the individual?
The people you have on the applicant interest list, Wanda Harrington and George Caraway.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I did look at that.
There are two eligible.
What's your preference?
One from District 3 and one from District 2. I don't know either one of them.
Who are they?
Wanda C. Harrington in District 3, as Mr. Gaze mentioned, and then you have George Caraway, District 2.
I'll move that Wanda Harrington be appointed as our alternate. I do happen to know.
All right, any other? Not read the vote.
A commotion, we reappoint Dr. Bright.
Sir. No others, we'll vote. All right. Child prevention team?
Make a motion, we appoint Detective Chad Suggs to that position.
All right, read the vote. Okay, now we're down to the Pitt County Planning and Bover.
Make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Make a motion to appoint, reappoint Frank Bradham, Jacob Cox, Wanda Harrington, and William Wood.
Second.
Read the vote. All right. Okay. Dave, you have any comments you want to make today?
No, sir.
Mr. James?
Yes, I want the planning department to come back with us, James, redo this, such as the thing we had today. A lot of these people, and I need to do some talking, probably in the executive session at the next meeting. I want to fill you in on some things that evidently some of you don't know about. All right, the next thing I want to say too, is this, since this is comment, the tax people want to know what kind of taxes they're paying on this property out there, since we know exactly how much money they got for the land and so forth, which is, that comes back with the manager.
Melvin?
No comment.
Eva?
Put that down.
There.
No comment. Thank you.
No comment.
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, as layers on with the Pitt County School Board, I'd like to say that my observation in observing school board meetings is that our school board and our superintendent and her staff are very diligent in doing their job. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Webb? I just hope everybody will go out and enjoy the fair this week. We're going to have good weather, so I hope everybody will get out there and enjoy that.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move.
All right, in favor of vote.